Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Kit Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by the incredible Colin and Julie from our team. What's up you guys?
Hey.
How's it going everyone?
We're thrilled to have you here today. We are going to be discussing how you can use wellness consults to grow your young living business on today's call. I've got some slides for you. You've got an exciting resource that you can import that literally the amount of time it's going to take for you to put this to use in your account and make it your own, you're going to actually see done on this call and it's going to take a very small amount of time at the end of the call. So if you're someone who would like to implement a system like this, you're going to be able to get that up and running very quickly thanks to the resource that we've created for you. But before we get into this, say hello. Where in the world are you? Head on over into the chat. We're always excited to hear from you, to learn more about you and where you are headed in your business. So let us know. We love having you guys here. For for those of you who are new, if you haven't been here before, we do this live every week on Thursdays at noon Eastern. This is for all Young Living brand partners. And of course, if you are a Get Oiling customer, then of course, you're going to benefit greatly from all of the tools and resources that we give you to help power your account. If you're not familiar with Get Oiling, we are a one stop shop for everything that you need but the VO to grow your young living business. And today we're going to be talking about how you can use a consultative approach, which I believe we should all be using in this field of work. We're going to use a consultative approach that is powered by smart use of technology to make you even more efficient. And even if you are brand new as a brand partner or you don't feel particularly confident maybe yet in your ability to make recommendations for people, for your customers about what products they might want to try or use. We're going to get that done today regardless of where you are in your process and your growth journey with Young Living, because you don't have to be an expert if you've got the right tools and we've got them made for you. So let's see who's here today. We've got New York. Hey, me too. Oklahoma City, Arizona, we're Oklahoma. We've got Florida, Julie's in Florida, and Ontario, other side of Canada from you Colin. What's up? New Jersey, excited to have you guys here today. So thank you for coming in and for sharing that with us everybody. So I got some slides. Let's go ahead. We're going to pop out a video and we're going to get into this. I really want you to benefit from this as quickly as possible. So if you checked your email by chance prior to our call starting here today, maybe you clicked the link from email to join this call, you have a resource bundle in your email. I want you to find it and maybe open that up as we're going through this, because you might even be able to modify yours and get it done on the call here live with us today. All right. So today we're talking as promised about how to use wellness consults to grow Young Living. So what we'll do first is talk about how these wellness consults work and can work for you from day one to grow Young Living as a brand partner. And then what you need to use these to grow. And then finally, the resources we've prepared for you and some live help and Q and A. If you have questions, if you are here today looking for help or support, even if your question has nothing to do with today's training topic, I want to invite you to add those questions to the Q and A because we have our absolute geniuses here on the call with us to help you get those questions answered. And if there's something that you want to walk through, we do save space at the close of our call for an opportunity like that. So if that's something that you're looking for, then please feel free to ask for it and we can make sure that we take that time on this call. Now, if you watch this as replay in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to make sure you are one of the first to know about what we are talking about on our next call. You want to get a reminder before we go live, get the link to join our live Zoom like this and like folks this week, be the first to receive resource bundles that we create for you to use in your own Get Oiling account. Make sure you head over here and sign up. Now, if you would like to schedule live hands-on, one-on-one coaching or work together on a call like this, we offer this every single week. Go to getoiling.com/web site review and pick a future Thursday at noon Eastern. And we will sit down together and work on whatever it is that you are wanting to work on, whether you're trying to figure out where your feet go first with Get Oiling, or you have a very sophisticated system, you're wanting to test out, you want eyes on your strategy, on your design, whatever that might be. We welcome you. This is a service we provide to you as our customers. You can get that hands-on help here. And if you want a little more in-depth hands-on help, meaning you want to have some of this stuff just done for you, we have an amazing qualified team that can help you with all manner of tasks relating to your Get Oiling account and your Young Living business. So getoiling.com/conceivers is where you want to go for that. Learn a little bit more about our team, what they can do for you, and then of course, request a quote. Now, question for you guys. Let's head over into the chat. I would like to know, as a brand partner, do you think of yourself as a wellness consultant? Saying some yes, absolutely, yes, 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 fabulous. Okay, excellent. Good. All right. So I don't have to convince you that this is the hat that we need to wear as a brand partner. If you're watching this as a recording and maybe you're a maybe or a no, please let me, let me put this out there to you. As someone who has been in sales, training sales teams, and especially training sales teams in this industry for the better part of almost a decade and a half at this point, putting on a consultant's hat when you approach the growth of your young living business is one of the most powerful things that you can do with your mindset and with your communication. You want to think about yourself as someone who is the holder of answers to problems. But of course, you have to sit and listen to what those problems are, ask great questions as a consultant would, before you can deliver the solution, right? So Deanna mentioned have been hesitant, been thinking we might need some kind of certification. Got you. Yeah, no, totally understood. I think when you see how we set this up, you'll see that we're not doing anything that would require certification here, because importantly, we need to behave compliantly, right? And Young Living is not something that we are supposed to, you know, diagnose or prescribe, right? So even if you are maybe a wellness consultant in a more typical certified sense, there are some important lines that are drawn around, you know, how you can go about conducting this kind of activity with your leads or your customers, right? So this is a very lightweight thing. It's really just its positioning and its effective communication. So before we get too far into that, because you are going to see how this works, I want to hear from you guys in the chat. Do you consult with your customers? What does that look like for you? Do you meet once a month? Do you have a series of questions that you maybe ask? What is, what is consulting with your customers look like? Share that in the chat. Let's all benefit from one another's knowledge for growth here. So let's talk about why we want to use wellness consults. So the first biggest reason why you want to use wellness consults is because you get a result in your business, right? This is a business at the end of the day and our business doesn't grow if we don't do our job of helping people. But if you really want to grow your business, you need customers who are serious. Serious customers are goal-oriented customers. Think about yourself for a moment. When you first got introduced to Young Living, you probably became, became, or maybe you already were to some degree, a health investigator, maybe for yourself, maybe for a family member or a friend, right? How many of us are that person, right? Who knows the wellness rabbit holes? You've probably fallen down a few and you know your way around well enough to be a bit of a tour guide, right? So you were a goal-oriented Young Living customer at that point. We want to do things that help create more of that. We want to duplicate that. We want more customers that are like you were when you first fell down the wellness rabbit hole, right? So we want goal-oriented customers, because goal-oriented customers are going to be willing to try new products. They'll probably be seeking them out and get curious on their own, but we got to help them get there. They also tend to stay more active and accountable to the outcome that they're looking for. So if product A didn't work, they're willing to try product B, or maybe add on a few additional products to support their goal and what they're trying to get done, right? Goal-oriented customers are also, they're not blind consumers. They're aware of what they're doing or they're trying to be, and they have a clearer picture of what's actually working for them. So they want to keep buying it. And then critically off of that point, if they're goal-oriented and they know what's working for them, how much more likely are they able to articulate their testimony for sharing? How much more obvious is it for them to decide that they could start sharing? Because they can actually draw a straight line between the use of Young Living products and the achievement of a goal that they had, right? So we want to foster this goal orientation in our customers and using a wellness consult model helps you do it. It's also an efficient use of your time and resources. Instead of just having open-ended calls, for instance, you have very goal-driven, specific conversations around information that they've already provided you. And I'll show you how that works just in a moment. But we want to make sure that when we are communicating with our customers, we are doing this in a way that is structured and that is in service of their best results and what's best for your business, right? So we want to have structured communication. And then really importantly, I mean, how many of us have just an absolute pile of educational content that we could share with our customers, right? But we don't want to just throw them off into a deep end or send them stuff that they don't want to hear right now, thus causing them to tune us out and not pay attention, right? If you're using this consultative approach, you're able to present education that they want and need right now that's in context with where they are and what their goal is and what their wants and interests are, right? And then finally, it's easier to empower them to self-support. Again, if you're using a structure, you're following a structure, their expectations of you are clear and you of them, they know what to do next. You share with them the information that they need. You're really providing a tailored experience to them, right? But we're doing so in a way that is very centered around their goals. Now, before you say, oh my gosh, but I have so many customers, this is going to take up every available hour of my week. Don't worry, it won't. There are ways that we can go about using this to where you could even get a consult done in half an hour or less. The trick is using tech the smart way. So I want to address a question that might be coming up for you as well. What if I'm new or I don't feel fully confident? I maybe don't have all of the answers to their question. I don't know how to use Young Living to solve for X. That's okay. You don't have to worry about that because you can do this from day one if your consult system is set up the right way. And we have a resource for you today that is literally set up exactly the way that you need it to be able to use regardless of where you are in your journey. Because the fact is, as a Young Living brand partner, when you signed up, you didn't just sign up to be able to refer people to Young Living and earn an income. You signed up and you got a family, didn't you? Didn't you get an enormous extended family of people who are in a lot of ways so much like you, so interested in the same things that you are, and a lot of them have been on this journey, some of them for over two decades. There are people steeped in this knowledge who have their life's purpose connecting to this, connected to the sharing of this knowledge, who are ready to help, right? Aren't we all Team YL? Everybody here is connected to a community, right? So remember that you have that support. So the key to getting this done in a way that is supportive to your customers and your future customers while honoring wherever you are in your informational journey and your, you know, your, your background and confidence in educating folks about Young Living and what the products can do. The way that we get this done is we gather the important information from the customer before you ever get on a call with them. We're basically having them tell you what you need to know so that you can do your homework before the call. You go consult the community, you consult your favorite resource, right? And then you take that information to the call. Maybe you even gather the links to the products you recommend for Young Living so that you're taking them to the call, right? So let's talk about what we need in order to use these wellness consults. So first, we need Get Oiling, because this is how we're going to go about this, working smarter, not harder. You also are ideally, you don't have to do this, going to want to use a calendar booking software. Okay, so what I recommend and personally use is Calendly. That's just calendly.com. We're not affiliated with them in any way. They have a free plan. And if you just have one calendar booking event, it's free, right? So you can actually use their free software and I'll show you exactly how we'll connect it to this whole system so that everything flows and you, all, all you have to do is just show up for your call when it's time for your call, okay? So then we also need your Young Living website. Okay, and then finally, your favorite Young Living educational resources. And if you're here in the chat or on later on our YouTube replay, what are your favorite educational resources? Are they, is there their desk reference, right? There are several desk reference books. There, I'm thinking oil testimonials.com. There is groups. What is your favorite way to look for solutions to wellness problems with Young Living products? Share that in the chat. And of course, that could be any number of different things, but importantly, remember that you've got a community that you can lean on. You can go into any Young Living Facebook group and say, I have someone who is dealing with X. What are your recommendations, right? Definitely get yourself a desk reference if you can get access to it and check out what's happening in the chat here. Make sure that you, you make your two when you're chatting here to everyone so that everyone can see what you're saying. Thank you for sharing. All right. So the first thing that we need is our wellness consult landing page. Now, what you'll be doing is maybe just swapping the images on the top and bottom of this screen. You could also just not use them. It's totally up to you. And you can swap out the placeholder with a picture of you. And what we're basically doing here is we're welcoming them. They're saying you can schedule your consult here. Join me for a private call where we can discuss your goals and put together a game plan to reach them quickly. So click the button below to fill out a quick questionnaire that will help us make the best of our time together on an upcoming call. So let's talk about what's on this. It's a pop-up, right? When they click, let's get started. There's a pop-up. You can see it in full over here on the right-hand side of the page. But what we're gathering here, and you can, this is modifiable. You can change this to however you want. So we've got contact information, name, email, phone. We're asking them, and this is a long text format. What is the one thing you most want to improve in your wellness? How long have you struggled with this? Describe your activity level. These are on multiple choice. How would you characterize your diet? How familiar are you with product ingredients? How important is it to you to improve your wellness? And would you be willing, and this is a yes or no, would you be willing to make a few strategic changes and stick to it for 90 days? Anything else you'd like me to know ahead of our call? That is a long answer. And that's it. We are giving them the chance to fill out all of this stuff. And don't you think, for instance, if somebody said, you know, here's my wellness goal or the struggle that I have and you see how long that they've dealt with it, you get the answers to these questions, you're going to feel pretty well-prepared to consult your resources or even the Young Living website for some products that you could recommend, right? And then essentially what you're doing when you get on the call with them is showing them how to get access to these products, going over what Young Living recommends as the frequency, how often you take it, et cetera. Bring some of maybe your own or testimonials from folks in your community that you've maybe reached out to to get prior to. And you can come to the call with a couple of educational resources that could support them as well if they exist and they are in context with what this person is looking for. Does this making sense so far? We're asking these questions before we even decide when it's time for us to talk. Okay? Now, where they're going to go after they fill this out is a call application confirmation page. Now, basically what this is, is another page that's got a picture of you and it's telling them, go check your email. Because in your email, there's going to be a link to book a call with me. Okay, so once they have gone to check their email, they're going to go to a book a call page that looks a bit like this if you're using Calendly. And in this case, you can see that it's embedded here on the page. It looks really similar to the first page that we were on. And this is the email that goes out. It is a campaign that's attached to that landing page. And it's giving them the link to book a call, which is what we just saw, right? So they'll actually receive this in that swapped order. They're going to go check their email, then they'll see that booking page. That's it. You don't have to edit this link. You really don't have to edit a lot of things, but I'll show you exactly what you're going to be modifying to get this done quickly today. This is your resource bundle. You will see that on this page, there are actually written instructions that you could follow as well. So be sure to claim this bundle and we will walk through how to set this up and launch your wellness consult funnel right now. So let me see. I think we've got a couple of questions in here. Okay, yeah, Krishonda, I'm going to, I'm going to chat through this with you after we get through our training here. I'm definitely here for you and can help you with that. All right. So let's go and take a look at our resources first. All right. So we've got some instructions here. Basically, what you're going to do is you're going to grant permission and you're going to claim your bundle and then you will have these different resources in your account. Okay, so the first thing that I want you to make sure that you have is an image of you to use on your pages. Ideally, we want to make this 500 by 500. It can be something different if you really want to. You probably, if you've been working on your website already, probably have something kind of like this that's already in your photo library with Get Oiling. Now optionally, you can create an image to use as wallpaper on the top and bottom pages of their PR pages using the blog banner preset in Canva. And I'll show you how we can do those while we're on the actual screen here in just a bit. Now, the booking setup that we need to do here is we need to first create a free account with Calendly. We'll locate the booking event and then we're going to hit share and add to website. And actually, let's just walk through this together because this is going to be. All right. So if I go to Calendly, essentially what you're doing, if you're on the free plan, you're going to be able to create one of these booking events. Okay, only one. And what you're going to do is you're going to hit create. And this is going to be an event type. This will be a one-on-one. You're going to give it a name and so we'll maybe call this, if you're using the free plan with Calendly, I would just call this 30 minutes with your name. The location is actually going to be custom. And let me show you what that's going to be. You're going to go into your Get Oiling site. You're going to go down here to Zoom meetings. You're going to create a meeting. We're going to call this Wellness Consult. It's going to be recurring. I'm going to not start video automatically and I'm going to mute participants on entry. This is a personal choice of mine and I'm going to also enable the waiting room. So I'm going to create the meeting. Copy link. And then head back over here. Our custom location, we're going to paste that link here. And it's only going to be displayed to them after they have confirmed their time with you. So we'll hit update. Now, this means that this is the location of the meeting, right? You are going to be able to click start meeting or save this start meeting link to your favorites, which is like what I have right here where you see VIP call. When I click that, it opens this my recurring meeting Zoom call. So I would maybe have Wellness Consultants be a favorite for you as a bookmark and just make sure you're using the start meeting link, okay? So what they're going to have is this one though. So that goes into your Calendly as the location. That's your custom location. This is going to be, we don't need to put any description or instructions here because we can include those on the page and this is also delivered in context. So I'm going to go next. You then want to make sure that you have connected your calendar. Obviously, there's a lot of options that you may want to consider here for yourself. I have an existing schedule. It's already set up here. We'll go ahead and include that. And I'm just going to go next. You can make that, you know, set that up to your liking. Invitee questions. I'm going to delete this one because we don't need it. We've already asked the questions that we needed. We got their name and email. Let's save and close that. And that's it. We're good to go. If you're, if you have free Calendly, this is as far as you need to go. If you have paid Calendly, you can customize your confirmation page and send them to a confirmation page on your Get Oiling site. And that would be redirect to an external site, but that's only if you're using paid Calendly, okay? You don't have to. It's just going to go to a Calendly confirmation page otherwise, which is totally fine. So let's go back to our events and now you should be able to see 30 minutes with Jane. Okay, so this is our calendar booking event. And when we share, we actually set up our booking page, we're actually going to be using this code here. So we click share, add to website, inline embed, continue, copy code. This is what we're going to be using when we're actually setting this up in your Get Oiling system. Now, let's go check out our pages. The first one being the Wellness Consult, okay? The first one is Wellness Consult Landing Page. Now you'll see that there are placeholder images here. What we can do for this, for the top and the bottom, number one, if you don't want to have these, you can just delete them by clicking the little trash can here. But what I'm going to do here is click this pencil and I'm going to change the background image. Now, I already have some blog banner preset images in here that I could use. But let's look at what it might look like to maybe go to Canva to do this. So I'm going to type in blog banner. Open Canva. Approve the cookies. And now we can actually go in. It's preset to the right size. We go to elements, maybe we'll go to, let's search for a beach, maybe if that's your vibe. I like this image a lot. I'm going to set it as the background and send it to Get Oiling. It'll take just a moment to add to the gallery. At which point we can find it and add it. Beautiful. I'm going to make that a parallax background. It's just going to provide a cool effect when you're scrolling. Totally, totally optional. But if you like that design touch, then obviously you might want to consider it. Let's repeat the same steps down here. Change background image, use that one, make it parallax and done. Finally, we want a picture of you. So we'll click this image, hit replace. Again, if you already have something uploaded like Jane does here, you could, here we go, there's her. You could do that or we could just go over to our Canva and type in logo. And that's going to give us the right resolution size to fit right here. And then you would find from your uploads a picture of you, right? So I'm just going to find, just do a picture of a woman with photo. Voila, set images, background and send to Get Oiling. There we go. That's done and we can save. And you have the visuals for this page taken care of, but let's go talk about something really important here and that are these intake questions. So I just clicked the settings button here and then we're going to leads. This is where you can modify any of the questions that you are asking, right? So you can add more by clicking add field. You can make them short text, long text. You could give them a dropdown list or a list to pick one or more. You can edit those lists. So here's for instance, the describe your activity level. We have four options here. You could add another one. You could delete one of these. You can change one of these. But you have a good starting point that's set up here for you. So obviously you can modify this to your liking. I've chosen to make everything here required with the exception of phone. And this, anything else you'd like for me to know. Everything else we are requiring in order for them to move forward. I'm adding a tag here, Wellness Consult. You may want to change that for you. The campaign is already set up, so you don't have to do anything with it. And of course, this page that's redirecting, all of this is already set up and ready to go. You don't need to change any of this. Now you can edit the campaign, which we can definitely go do here in just a moment. And we will be editing this application confirmation page as well here in just a moment. But this is where you're going to go. The settings, leads tab on this page is where you're going to modify the questions that you're asking. So we can do a quick preview of the work that we've done. You see, that's the parallax where we're scrolling over. It looks kind of cool, right? And we click, let's get started. And you can see all of the questions here. If you would like to see what it looks like on a tablet or on mobile, you can definitely do that as well. It is optimized for all of those different viewing instances. Cool, right? So now you've got this page done. Let's go and modify our other pages. So we're going to type in Wellness Consult in our search bar and go find the confirmation page. Because this is what they're going to see next. All right. So basically, we're just going to go back over here and we're going to swap this out for a picture of you and use the same one that we just did, right? So browse and there we go. You don't have to change anything here. You don't have to modify anything else on this page because it's got these codes. My email is going to show your email that you have set up for your Get Oiling account and this will show your name. Clicking here, right here, this is a contact form. Again, it's already programmed to work for you. You don't have to make any changes to it. That's the extent of what we're editing on this page. Finally, let's, or not finally, two steps. We've got a campaign. We'll type in Wellness Consult again and find that campaign. You actually don't need to change anything here because it's already set up to go to the, the booking page that we'll be modifying here in just a moment. So this, you don't have to change anything. You certainly can if you want to, but this actually has a link here that's using this code, my website. And because you downloaded this page in your bundle, it's going to automatically connect to it. So you don't have to do anything here. It's going to say. it's going to automatically connect to it. So you don't have to do anything here. It's going to say their name and we're telling them to go over here to book a call. Alright, so now let's go check out that book a call page. And Book a Wellness Consult is going to look like this. Okay, so let's go and put those same settings in place that we did for the other one. We'll change our background image. Add the pretty and the parallax. Do it for the bottom as well. And parallax. And then finally, what we're doing here is we're embedding that calendar. So I'm going to click this image and delete it. Now make sure that you've got this code copied that we already went over, right? This code in Calendly. Now what we're going to do is pretend like we're adding a video. This is kind of cool. So click Add Video. Click Embed Code. Paste that code here. Like use embed code. It might not show up right away, but when you click Done, it does. There you go. So with this, you have completed your entire funnel and it's ready to go. The whole thing, done. That's it. How much time did that take us? It was like eight minutes, maybe? Maybe. So once you have this, folks can fill out their form, the form that you have on that Wellness Consult page. They'll be brought over here to book a call with you after they have viewed the confirmation page and clicked the link and email. And now they're on your calendar and you are able to go and look at their contact and see what their responses were to the questions that you asked before you ever even get on a call with them. So let's go take a look at this in action. I'll find the one that I did earlier today. Now I did make a copy of this, so I don't know that it's actually going to. I'll go ahead and just double check that this is totally set up the way that it needs to be. So Wellness Consult Landing Page. We're going to go to Leads and I want to make sure that they're going to. There we go, Application Confirmation, done. And then in the Campaign. I want to make sure, I'm going to modify this just so you can actually see how it'll look when it's totally done. So I'll change this to. Believe it is Book a Wellness Consult. There we go. Okay, so this is done. Now let's go see this from start to finish. Okay. So we're going to schedule a free Wellness Consult. Okay, I'm just going to put some things in here. I'm going to fill this out. And we'll say, let's get started. So you can see that this automatically populates Jane's email address, which is cool. When we say click here, it is going to show Jane and her contact information. This will do the same for you. And then where it is going to send us next is to our email where we can book our consult. I'm actually going to, I mean, I'm going to check my email. I know you can't see my screen right now. Another thing that's happened right away is that you're receiving an email from Get Oiling that you have had somebody actually fill out the form on this page. So while I wait for my email to arrive, let's actually go look at our dashboard here. And you can see that this person visited the website a minute ago. And they have applied for a consult. That's going to be under your past actions here. So you can see all of their answers. And then you could use this to do your research before you get on a call with them, right? Pretty, pretty, pretty cool. So the next place that we're going to go, once the email arrives, I actually just got that email. I'm going to click here and you can see that we can book a Wellness Consult here. Book a Game Plan with Jane is what this is called. I'm going to click and take this appointment. And schedule this event. And you'll see that this is actually, in this case, because I have paid Calendly, I do have a post. A post-booking confirmation page and that is something that I included in that confirmation page section in Calendly. So it actually doesn't take them off to the Calendly site. They're on your Get Oiling site the entire time if you go about it that way. But if you aren't in a position where you want to pay for a scheduler, you can absolutely just let the Calendly confirmation page handle this and that's it. So what do you do next? Somebody has filled out a form on your website. They've told you what their wellness goals are. They've told you what they've tried in order to achieve them. They've given you some basics for you to work with. So you know that you can be making basic recommendations around things like diet and exercise and maybe even some Young Living products that can help motivate them in that direction. Gather those things, put them into your notes in your Get Oiling and then when it's time for you to hop on a call with them, you're just going to go to your Zoom calls. Click Start Meeting and you get on the call with them. Make those recommendations and you can share with them all of the information that you want to share. And again, to do this, you don't have to be a wellness practitioner. You can be an excited brand partner with a heart to serve, as I know you all are, armed with just the things that you need to share and you can help them get that result. So I know we've got some questions here, so I'm going to start going through those. And Krishonda, I will walk through this with you. I actually want to bring you out to chat to kind of explore those different options with you. So bear with me for just a moment. Jolene says, when you create an image with Canva from a page, is there a way to get it to save in our Canva account? I think that this is just a Canva thing. It's not something that we can really do anything about. If you have, if you're wanting to make an image that lives in your Canva account, then you should just be logged into Canva and making your images there. And then what you can do is, and I'll, I'll show you real quick what this looks like. If you have a design that you've already created in your, in your Canva account, then you can import that into your Get Oiling really quickly by, I'll just use this as an example. Here's an image. I want to maybe swap this out with something that I've already created in Canva. I'm going to go to Replace. I need to, there we go. I'm going to go Replace, go to Canva. And then, you know, if you want it to be a certain size, so this will be logo, so it's five hundred by five hundred, open Canva. Then you're going to scroll down here to Projects, search for the name of it or find the design and then of course you can add it. So that is what I would recommend. It's not going to save to your Canva account if you're using the Good Oiling Canva button. Where do you find the my email code on the Wellness Consult Confirmation page? So let's go back over here. So my underscore email is one of the many codes that you can use that you'll find pre-populated in a list in the editor. And so let's find this. We'll find that page, let me see, Wellness Consult. Okay, so like this one here, for instance. My underscore email, that's the code, right? So this is just basically your email address that you have here. So when you click your name here, whatever email address you put right here is what's going to show up right here. And you can see, and I don't know that it actually shows up in this editor. It shows up in our message editor. So if we wanted to go to, like maybe send an email or something. So we'll go to this contact and we want to send them an email. If you click this little guy right here, it'll actually populate first name of contact, email address of contact, but here's my email address. And it says my underscore email. And you can see I actually set up this signature to utilize these, these tags as well. And again, all of this is just going to populate the information that you have in your account when you click this and fill that information out in Good Oiling. Okay. Is there an easy way to turn a page you've created into a blog post? Hmm, no, not really Jenny, sorry. But, but you can copy its contents and move it over to a blog post. The, the thing is, blog posts are, the sort of backend coding is quite different from a page. And that's actually a really good thing because blogs are, blogs are designed to be articles where pages could really be anything. And the way that our, the backend of our blog setup is designed is to really help you to, to show up in the search engines. If you're using, you know, the training that we have and the different features that we have appropriately. So I hope that helps. Okay, Krishonda. Can you raise your hand for me? Let me know that you can actually like chat before I bring you out. I don't know if you're in a place where you can talk or not. Okay, cool. Hi.
Hi.
Hey. Alright, so you would like some insight on how to set up a recurring book club with one vault. You followed along last week and you're setting up your first book, but you want to know how to use both current and past studies in the same vault. So can you tell me a little bit more?
Um, okay, so we're doing our first club and I went through, you know, with the start here and the schedule calls page and all of that. But what I'm thinking is when we get to the second book, where do I put it versus where these pages are now?
Yeah, so, and I will actually, I'm going to go to that example one that I gave you. So the, the example that I used last week was last week, wasn't it? The example that I used, it is intended to be a vault that will be used in perpetuity for book club. And that's why, I think, let me actually verify that I'm actually correct in saying or thinking this. Let me go to, I'm going to log into her member area here and show you. Okay, so right now, this is the title of the, of the vault. But when it's time for the next one, you're just going to change this. Right? And, and you'll change this image. Like you'll basically just give it a little makeover. The discussion, you keep the same. The start here page, you're going to be changing the details of the book. Obviously, the dates, like basically you're, you're just going to go and modify these different things. And that's, I was basically, you're, you're just going to do a little modification. What I would encourage you to do as well, if you're going to be doing this reliably over time, is you might consider employing an automation at the close of that really long campaign with all the reminder emails. Add an automation that removes them from that campaign and attach it to the last message. So that way, when it's time for you to run the next book club, that person can cleanly be opted back in.
Nice, okay.
For the next one, right? Yeah, the discussion's going to be the same. So you're then going to, for the live calls and replays, are you wanting to keep all of the videos from the previous book studies like in the vault? Like, do you want to main, do you want to keep those like long after you guys have gone through the book club?
Like for I was thinking that we would and, you know, my mom may not have been there, but I was thinking we would keep everything. And that's where I was confused. What do we do with all of these replay calls?
Yeah.
Yeah, she said, yeah, she want, we want to keep the videos.
Okay. Okay, excellent. So what you could do is create an online class and, and have a, you know, the week one, week two, week three in those different videos. And so you could have that online class in here be, it would just be an additional piece of content in the vault. So we have a start here, book study discussion, live calls and replays. And you might want to like maybe add to this and say current book, right? Like current study. But then you could have another one that is past, past book studies. And you could use like an online class to, to house all of those videos.
Okay, so current we have on the page and then make a class for whatever other ones. That does make sense.
Yeah, and so then you could also with the creating the online class, you would have like, you know how you have the, the sections or like the, the sort of titles, you would have that this one's for this book and then here's all the lessons and then you should, it's a category, right? So the category name is the book and then you've got all the lessons and then move all of these to that one after. And you could be doing that while you are kind of keeping this going by, like, let's just say, for instance, you're launching this one live. Have your, have the online class created here, but just have it disabled so nobody can see it. And then as you are going and taking your replay, for instance, and putting it onto, onto these, go ahead and paste that into the lesson. So that the, you don't have to go and like, you know, go back and redo your work like all at once before you make that live. Does that make sense?
Yes, so, but it would be disabled the whole time. That's what you're thinking?
So yeah, it would be disabled while, while this book study is live. Right? That the sort of the past calls one, you, so, okay, so you have two different ways. Let me go to an online class here and I'll show you what I mean.
I think that that makes sense. That way, all of the replays are on the same page while it's live. And then we can enable the class.
Right.
Whenever we start the next group.
Yeah, yeah. So initially, you're going to disable the class by unclicking this Enable Class. And then in the future, so let's say now you have all of your book one in these lessons. All you have to do when you are in book two and you're building out these lessons with the replay pages on them, you can disable the individual lessons until you're ready to release all of them. So that way you, you still have the class enabled, so that people are, while, while you're working on book two, they can still go see book one replays, right? But you are concurrently building out the book, book two replays that you can then go back and enable once you're done with, does that make sense?
Yes, great idea. I love it.
Okay, yay. Yeah, I, I think that'll be a lot faster. You don't have to like go and create a whole thing and do like a big project. It's just, it's an extra two minutes you'll spend while you're doing the regular adding the video thing anyway.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. I just was missing that last step.
Awesome. Glad we could help. Thanks for coming out. Alright, Marina asks, I have a vendor event this weekend. I created a landing page for people to enter giveaway. Watch the vendor event training, created a graphic in Canva with a QR code using the link from the landing page. Right now that landing page is set in kiosk mode, so people can enter on iPad. Can that giveaway landing page be used for both options? Yes and no. So somebody who is using the QR code is going to a website page and their experience is going to be fundamentally different from the person who is at the table. Optimally, the answer is no. You should just make a copy of it and one of them goes to a confirmation page because they're going to be going there from their phone. Kiosk mode is really most useful when they're actually at the kiosk, if you will, if they're at your table. They're putting their information in and then it just refreshes back. Somebody could assume that maybe they're getting an error or that it didn't work. If they are receiving a link to a kiosk mode page from a QR code like on their phone. So I would recommend no, personally. But duplicate it, like use the same thing, just have the settings different on the two. Okay. Perfect. Alright, so I'm seeing this in the chat. Just make sure you guys come over to the Q and A. If you would like for me to address you directly or if you don't want to get missed. How did you find the water for the blog banner? I'm in Canva and don't see it. Okay, so let's go. I, I can do that again. No problem. You got a few minutes. I told you that this setup was really fast and I, I am also a little bit of a fast talker to be fair. So let's go back over to our pages and find our Wellness Consult. Okay, so how about, we'll just do this one. I, oh, that's not actually the one that I want. The Consult Landing Page. So you're going to click your pencil. You're going to change background image. You're going to add design from Canva. Blog Banner is the preset. Open, allow the cookie. And then we're going to go to Elements. And I typed in beach. You can click See All for Photos. This is, it looks like, you see it says pro over it. So I, I am a Canva Pro user. So it may be if you're not a pro user, that might not be showing up. There are some pictures that they don't show or share, but this one's really similar. Set it as the background and you can send it to Get Oiling to be used in that section. But yeah, that specific one, which is really beautiful picture. That specific one, I think, is a Canva Pro one. Thanks for asking that question. Let me see, I've got some more in the Q and A here. Oh, by the way, when you watch the replay, you can adjust the playback speed on YouTube. So if you find that I am a little too you can adjust the playback speed on YouTube. So if you find that I am a little too New York in my speed, you can actually slow it down if you want to. All right. If there's time, can you show how you got the embed code from Calendly one more time? There is time. Absolutely. Let's go check it out. So we'll go back to Calendly. And this is what you'll see. If you have the free Calendly, you'll just see one of these. We're gonna click share. Add to website. Inline embed. Continue. And copy. That's it. And this is something that is spelled out on that page with instructions. So once you have that, you're going to, let me see, let me find a. There we go. Book a wellness consult. You're gonna go to your calendar. It's gonna say add calendar embed code to the section. You're gonna click it, delete it. Pretend like you're adding a video. Embed code. Paste. Use, done. And she's there. And again, you can slow down the replay. Awesome. Thank you for the question. Let's see, anybody else have questions or something that you would like to walk through? Oh, Rhonda, this is a good question. You can use that additional question to ask who they want to have a meeting with. My daughter and I work together. So yeah, it would be a dropdown list. Pick one would be the, what you would set up there. And so you would put in your name for one or her name for the other. Absolutely. Nicole, if you don't have Calendly, but you have another booking service, it's fine. It's gonna work the same. People do this with Acuity as well. You're just going to create a booking event or use an existing one. If it's like a neutral one, like a 30 minutes with you or a or make a specific one for wellness consults. You don't need any information from the person other than their name and email. And once you have it set up with your correct hours of availability and everything, you're gonna look for the sharing option and look for the option to embed that event on your website. And you're just gonna follow the same steps. This will work with other paid services as well, for sure. Awesome. There's so many great resources dropped in here, you guys. Definitely head over, if you haven't done this before, head over to our Facebook group and introduce yourself. And let's maybe start a thread, a conversation about our favorite places to go when we are looking for a way to refer product to people, where you get your testimonials, where you get your protocols, where you get your reference material. If you're new and this is not something that you're well seasoned in, there are people here who have servant hearts who love to share what works. Because my gosh, where else are you gonna get it? So head over to our Facebook group and keep this conversation going. I think we have an incredible community here and there's just so much knowledge that everyone here brings to the table. And even your own testimonial and personal experience would be just such a huge asset to somebody that you didn't even know was looking for that help. So definitely check that out. AJ says, I've been feeling inspired recently and have been blogging a lot using AI to help. It's, it's this, is this a good use of time or just something extra? Should I focus on something else instead? So AJ, I love that you're blogging. This is something that a lot of people put off because they don't see the, the value in it, the immediate value in it. But the fact is, is creating a body of content behind your brand is one of the most valuable things you can do over time. You just want to make sure that you're balancing this with the things that move the needle in your business now, right? So you've got more of like a passive marketing strategy happening with blogs. Whereas an active marketing strategy is going to be prospecting and starting conversations and, you know, having events where you're inviting people, having these wellness consults where you're introducing people to your product, getting them started with Young Living. So what I would look at with your blogging inspiration is maybe sit down and, and really map out your plan for the blog content you're going to be releasing this next quarter, for instance. And then you could even go through and get some of the, the stuff batched out for that. Maybe you've got the content written. And then you want to go back and figure out what are the images that you're going to use. And then you make those, right? So you can actually be setting this up to where you have you have, oh my goodness, there's a baby here. I'm sorry. I'm so distracted. She's so cute. Oh my God. She's getting so big. But yeah, basically what you want to do is, is batch that kind of work. Because it is something that is easy to spend a lot of time doing. And if all you do is blog and, and you don't have a list and you're not found on the search engines just yet, then it's not gonna move your, your business forward, right? So you just gotta find a good balance there. But kudos to you. Make sure you watch our blog branding trainings as well as our SEO trainings. Cause that is going to help you really optimize the work that you're doing so that is really effective for your lead generation long term. Cornelia says, talking about blogging, I'm confused about the length of a blog post. I have heard about more than 400 words to about a thousand words. Can you say a couple of words about it? I wish that this stuff wasn't so opaque. I really do. But it is opaque. Google is not gonna, it's not gonna, they're not gonna tell you what they're looking for. But the fact is, and this is kind of the mindset that I keep around this. Google was built by like Stanford guys, right? Stanford, anyway, they're academics. Google was built by academics. And so what they find credible and what they've designed their system to find as credible are pieces of content that echo an academic article, if you will. Is it exactly? No, but that's what they see as being sort of the height of credibility, right? And just, and I'm just talking about the content itself, not your backlinks, not your, you know, keywords, whatever. So basically what you're looking at is something that's got depth. And that's why I say neighborhood of a thousand words. Can you do less? Yeah, absolutely. You could always go back and add more and republish a blog post like it's new, right? So don't, don't let not having a thousand words keep you from publishing that 400. Just know that what you want to be aiming for over time is something that's a little meatier. It's a little longer. I would actually go and look, I mean, Google the key words that you want to be aiming for and look at the articles that are brought up there. You'll, you're probably gonna see a thousand words or more written up on those, on those articles. So if you have any sort of hesitation about it, look for the keywords that you would like to rank for and, and, and see what those people are doing successfully. One of the things they have in common is, is the volume of words. Along with, of course, the strategic placement of their, you know, key words and header format and all those things that we cover on our SEO training. AJ says, ask AI to help you optimize your blog for SEO. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not infallible. It's, you don't, don't take it as like, you know, the god of Google. It's, it's, it's an AI bot, but it is, it is something that you can definitely use as a really helpful framework. Let's see, the Get Oiling Facebook page, let me see, that is getoiling.com slash groups slash get oiling online, right? Oh, sorry, getoiling.com. It's facebook.com. Thank you, Colin. I'm, I'm good at this. Yeah, definitely head over to the Facebook group. We love to meet you. Love to see you. And, and yeah, you guys talking about the AI and ChatGPT. We actually had a ChatGPT specific training. Check that out on our YouTube channel. And we did when we launched our Write With AI feature, we have a very specific how to use the Write With AI, Write With AI feature with Get Oiling as well, because it does behave slightly different from ChatGPT. PS, better. Because it knows that you're a Young Living brand partner and so it can help you write in that direction. So thank you guys for your amazing questions and all this great attention today. Go set up your calendar and set up your funnel and start using this to conduct more wellness consults. Have these strategic calls with these questions asked ahead of time so that you can come to your consult, knowing what you're gonna recommend. You can work with them on a schedule of what to use and you can keep track of this so that you can help to keep them accountable because an engaged, informed and goal oriented customer is what is going to move the needle for you. Big picture with those residuals that you ultimately want that this business can give you. So thank you for being here. We'll be back here same time next week. In the meantime, head over to Facebook. We'll see you guys there. Take care.